All right. This is our meeting. Reunion of the person in city. We need to get to your. February 1, 13. Um, we're all. Questions? It's difficult. Very changing. So, uh, presentation before I get started, uh, a lot of you I see new faces in the audience. So, um, as a reminder, please that all cell phones and electronic devices to silent. So that we don't interrupt any of the important things that somebody may have to say. Uh, okay, Mr. Smith. The presentation of the Youth Advisory Council.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome a large group of students from the high school. Grateful that they could be here and I'll start by introducing Mr. Aaron Davis. Um, uh, one of the teachers at the high school and he'll kind of introduce the program.
Hello, everyone. My name is Aaron Davis. Can you hear me? It's on red zone. Okay. Uh, I've been teaching at Hermiston High School for nineteen years and about six years ago, um, Mr. Smith got ahold of me through Melody Bastillos, one of our counselors at the high school about starting a youth advisory program. And, uh, we were had a couple of conversations and then COVID hit and we kind of had to pause everything like everyone did. And then since then, we've kind of, I feel like every year we're getting a little bit more, a little bit more. And, uh, as you can see, this is about half of the group that's in, in our Youth Advisory Council this year. Uh, we got a lot of kids involved in other, uh, other activities, uh, sports, uh, work, uh, someone's sister's sick, so that's why they can't be here. So my point is, is that I'm really proud of these kids. We met, uh, in the springtime, right before, uh, school was out, had a meeting, kind of a, uh, just to see who's interested, kind of put it out, what we do, and then met again right before school started, uh, and just excited for this group, excited, uh, to take it to the next step. And I really want this to be something that, you know, even after I'm gone, it's just Hermiston High School Youth Advisory Council is just kind of a staple in this community, uh, having the kids, you know, they're not, they're young adults, uh, having their, uh, voices be heard are, i- is, is really important. And so this summer, uh, I came up with kind of our mission statement and some goals this year, so I'm just going to read them so I don't forget them. Uh, so our purpose this year for her, uh, Hermiston Youth Advisory Council, uh, provide Hermiston High School students a voice in their local community. Uh, we want to empower the youth to be leaders and ambassadors for positive change. Uh, we want to help advise local government and community leaders from a student perspective. All right. So what they're going to do now is the kids that are here are going to come up, they're going to say their name, what grade they are in and what committees they are a part of. And then if you guys have any questions for me, uh, afterwards, I'll be more than happy to answer them. All right. Thank you.
Hello. Good afternoon.
Sorry.
Um, I'm Aspen Enners. I am a senior at Hermiston High School and I am a part of Planning Commission, City Council and Parks and Rec.
Hi, my name is Gloria Serrano. I'm a senior at Hermiston High School. I'm a part of the Hispanic Advisory and the EOTech one.
Hello, I'm Aries Woodward. I'm a senior at Hermiston High School and I'll be a part of the Library Board Committee.
Hello, my name is Gabriel Richards. I am a junior this year at Hermiston High School and I will be part of the Planning Committee, the Parks and Rec Committee and Youth Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Hi, uh, I'm Janine Orozco. I'm going to be a part of the EOTech Committee and Parks and Rec Committee. Oh, and I'm a sophomore.
Hi, I'm Emily Stone. I'm a sophomore and I'm part of the EOTech Committee.
Um, hello, uh, my name is Teo, Teodoro Delgado. I'm a sophomore and I'm part of the, uh, City Council, the City Council, City Council Committee, I guess. I forgot what it's called. Yeah, that.
Hi, my name is Taylor Smith. I'm also part of the City Council Committee and part of the Planning Committee and I'm a junior this year. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Cabeza and I am part of the City Council and I am in a junior in high school.
Hi, good evening all. I'm Adriana Negrojo. I'm currently a junior and I am a part of the City Council Committee and the Planning Committee.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Sanchez. I am a junior at high school and the committees I am a part of are EOCCO, EOTech, Planning Commission, as well as Parks and Recs.
Hello, I'm Maddox Mizrono. I am a part of the Planning Commission in the Library Board and I'm a junior this year.
Hello, I'm Sophia Rodriguez. I'm going to be, I'm a sophomore this year and I'm part of the Library Board and the Parks and Rec Committee.
Hi, my name is Kyla Pack. I am a junior this year and I'm a part of the Library Committee.
Hi, my name is Toby Orta and I will be a part of the City Council Committee and the Hispanic Advisory Committee and I am a junior this year.
So easy for high school students to come up here and talk in front of adults they've never met. Um, I also want to mention, uh, I've got two amazing volunteers, uh, Kyrie Ross, she, uh, works for the school district as well, uh, very active in, uh, Hermiston, uh, local politics. And then I've got Ashley Smith, she's our Umatilla County Nurse Practitioner that works with the school district as well. Couldn't do without them. Um, you know, and again, all, all the praise and all, you know, everything goes to the students, uh, they're giving up time, you know, money, you know, what were we wanting to do in the evenings, you know, during, you know, during the school year, not hang out here, uh, all the time. So I really, um, I'm proud of you guys. I'm excited for this year and anything you guys need, any questions you have, any, any concerns or anything, reach out to me. Um, I work for the school district and so you guys can get ahold of me that way. Uh, I also wanted to mention that seven of us are going to go to the League of Oregon Cities, uh, conference next month in Portland. We're going to represent Hermiston High School and the city of Hermiston along with, uh, some of you, I'm guessing as well. And so I'll be excited to report back, uh, next, next month or so on how that went.
Outstanding.
Thank you, guys. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Nope.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. So it's really important that we're bringing forward our youth into the process of government, city government, you know, as Mr. Smith relayed to the, uh, to the, uh, uh, students a little bit ago, you know, this is, this is probably one of the most important forms of government because, as he put it, you, when you turn your water on, you want the water to come on, you know, when you dial the phone and ask for the fire police, we're the ones that's going to show up, our, our city employees for the most part. So, um, getting involved, uh, as I told the kids, the world's run by those that shown up, that show up and, uh, that's, they have raised their hands, they've stepped forward, they want to be a part of this and they are to be beyond commended. This is, this is an important step for them in their, in their lives and being able to stand up here and speak before us, having done it once or twice, it's kind of difficult to do even now. So I appreciate all their work and I'm looking forward to working with them in the future. So. That, as they say, is that. All right, uh, we're at the first opportunity for, uh, citizen input. This is for citizen input on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to bring anything before the council that is not on the agenda is asked to do, please do the following. Limit your comments to not more than five minutes, uh, state your name and address and direct your comments to me. So do we have somebody that's wishing to speak? Seeing none. Um, okay, consent agenda items. Uh, we have consent agenda items A through C. Um, are there any council comments or questions in regards to that? Not yet. Any public comment on count, uh, consent agenda items A through C? Does the council, yes, step forward.
Good evening. My name is Brian Lemke. I live at six, one, two, three, six, Stackland Road. And I'm speaking on, uh, item B and C. Thank you for the chance to speak. I know tonight's discussion on annexing over eight hundred acres is a major step for Hermiston's future.
Excuse me, uh, sir, um, we're on the consent agenda, so items B and C are regarding to an ad hoc committee and our last meeting minutes. Um, we're going to have a public hearing after this and then we'll go on to ordinances and resolutions, which I think is probably what you're talking about. We're not there yet, though. No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I jumped in.
What you get for missing one.
I guess. So, uh, returning back to, are there any, uh, public comments in regards to consent agenda items? Okay, council wished to remove any items? Counsel Roberts?
I would like to remove item B.
Okay, we are, um. Okay, we'll, we'll move item B. So can I get a motion to, uh, approve consent agenda items A and C?
Motion moved.
Second.
And moved by Counselor Roberts, second by Counselor Hayward. Uh, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, item B, removed. Counsel Roberts.
So this is, uh, the recommended appointment for our ad hoc charter review committee and I just thought it would be, uh, maybe, uh, wise to list these names out loud. The charter is, I would say arguably the most important document that governs our city and how it functions. And so just for, uh, the public to hear those names, instead of just having them be part of the consent agenda, I just would like those read out loud. So we announce who's being recommended for that committee.
I agree. And so as such, the count, uh, consent agenda item B, recommend appointment to the ad hoc charter review committee is as follows. Chair, Dr. David Drotsman, members, Monique Brantley, Karen Jones, Paul Wolverton, Kendra Stone, Rod Harden and Val Hoxsey. And I too am glad to see those folks stepping forward and being a part of the process that, that governs the way we govern. And so I'm very happy to see that and we will be moving forward with that here very shortly. Okay, so can I get a, uh, does any council comments or questions on that, on that item? Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda item?
You moved.
Second.
Okay, been moved by Counselor Linton and seconded by Counselor Hayward.
V Myers. She beat me.
Okay.
You mean, they're on?
Okay, uh, roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, we are now at public hearings, uh, creating a, a local improvement district number three, two, three. Um, are there any declarations of ex parte contact or conflict of interest from the council?
Yes, I have to recuse myself because I work for AWS and that will be.
Miss, this isn't an item that.
Oh, never mind.
Related, it's different one.
Sorry, never mind.
Your recuse has been denied.
No go.
Any others? Okay, hearing guidelines will now be presented by City Manager Smith.
The City Council is holding a public hearing regarding the creation of local improvement district number three, twenty-three. The City Council will take public testimony on this issue and make a decision at this meeting. The hearing process will begin with a staff report by Assistant City Manager Mark Morgan. Following presentation of the staff report, the City Council will take public testimony. Testimony will be received by supporters of the proposal first, followed by neutral testimony and then opponents of the proposal will testify, at which time staff will also note any written remonstrances received by impacted property owners. The council requests that all people wishing to testify approach the microphone and give their name and mailing address before testifying. Council also requests that they identify which property they repre- represent. People wishing to testify should limit testimony to not more than five minutes unless a longer period is provided by the City Council. Written testimony will also be accepted from all parties. After everyone wishing to testify has had an opportunity to speak, the City Council will close the public hearing and enter deliberations. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony will be received. Mr. Mayor.
All right, this hearing is now open. City staff will now present its report. Assistant City Manager Morgan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, this evening we're considering ordinance twenty-three seventy-one, which would form local improvement district number three, twenty-three. Maybe? Uh, so this ordinance, as I mentioned, approves the formation of LID three, twenty-three, which will construct street curb gutter sidewalk and stormwater infrastructure on Northwest Second Street between Elm Avenue and Cherry Avenue. Uh, additionally, this will assess approximately eighty-six percent of the cost to the adjacent benefiting properties. Uh, this is an image looking, uh, at Northwest Second Street looking south from Elm. You can see, uh, the gravel and improved section of the street. Uh, this is an aerial showing, uh, the yellow portion shaded there is Northwest Second Street, uh, with Elm Avenue on the north, uh, Cherry on the south. Uh, the property's bounded, uh, in the benefiting area outlined in the black dashed line by five tax slots, uh, three of which are completely undeveloped, uh, and, or excuse me, three of which are developed already and two are completely undeveloped. Uh, again, uh, council's been talking about this issue, uh, for the past, uh, number of months. So we originally brought this up back in March, uh, but for the folks watching online and in the audience, uh, this is mainly in response to, uh, proposal by ODOT to install traffic separating barricades on Elm Avenue around the intersection with three ninety-five, uh, approximately as outlined there in the yellow. Uh, so you can see, um, erecting barricades, uh, through a couple of the streets that front onto Elm in the vicinity of Northwest Second. And I took out some of the references from the last presentation we did back in March, uh, but ultimately the, the purpose of those, uh, traffic separating barricades are, you can see the yellow line in that image on the left-hand side, uh, that's where a raised curb along with candlesticks will be placed. Uh, oftentimes we see traffic, uh, trying to cross three lanes of traffic while they're waiting to stop at the stoplight. So, uh, that issue is getting bad and only getting worse. So, uh, some of the impacts of erecting that barricade, you know, it's not just getting in and out of Starbucks. It'll also prevent ingress and egress, uh, coming onto Spruce there because you can see the barricades that will go up in the spring, uh, will go through, uh, the intersection with Spruce. So, uh, now, um, currently, uh, the green line would be, you know, traffic leaving that, uh, development, the storage, uh, uh, location on Spruce. Uh, if they were heading to some points west, uh, they would get out onto Spruce, go out to Elm, turn left on Elm, uh, or if you were going to there, you would come in on it, on Elm, take a right on Spruce and go in that direction. Uh, but with the erection of these traffic barriers, uh, if you were to leave, uh, that storage unit to business, you would have to drive on the gravel, uh, unimproved portion of Dogwood to the gravel and improved portion of Northwest Second before you could take a left to go, uh, west, uh, to wherever you're going. So, uh, the recommendation, as I mentioned, is to construct, uh, paving curb gutter and sidewalk on Northwest Second between Elm and Cherry. Uh, but also it's important to keep in mind not shown in the map, uh, the city, uh, all along has been planning to, uh, pay for and construct, uh, the portion of Dogwood, uh, between Spruce and Second. Uh, for the portion of Northwest Second with this LID, uh, again, um, it will benefit the adjacent properties that have yet to develop, uh, because otherwise the cost would fall to them, uh, when they develop. And so this LID will assign approximately eighty-six percent of the cost to those properties that front on the Northwest Second. A little bit of background on the, the history and the timeline. So, uh, March twenty-fourth, council asked for preliminary engineering report. Uh, at that same council meeting, uh, once that engineering report was presented, uh, the council elected to, uh, declare its intent to form an LID and set a public hearing for May twelfth. Uh, on March twenty-fifth, uh, the day after that council meeting, uh, notice was mailed to all the property owners. A notice was posted physically on all of the properties. Uh, on May ninth, uh, we received several remonstrances from the property owners, uh, proposed for inclusion in the LID. Uh, on, uh, May twenty-third, uh, we identified an error in one of the non-remonstrance agreements, uh, that we've had on file since nineteen ninety-two, uh, which effectively rendered that non-remonstrance agreement, uh, useless. Uh, so then on March twenty-seventh, the City Council voted seven to one in favor of proceeding, uh, with the LID, uh, but because it was not a unanimous vote as a result of not having the, uh, non-remonstrance agreements in place, uh, the issue had to be tabled until December. Uh, however, uh, throughout summer, staff worked to negotiate with the property owners, uh, and ultimately reached a, uh, agreeable settlement with the property owners, uh, whereby they will accept seventy-five thousand dollars toward the, uh, ultimate project in order to remove their opposition from the project. Uh, so this evening now, uh, lacking property owner opposition, uh, that removes their remonstrance, which is what would have created the delay until December. Uh, now the LID is allowed to proceed forward with a simple majority vote. Uh, so again, uh, just touching on the financial aspect, uh, this is the exact same project that was presented in May, uh, the scope's the exact same, the total cost is, the actual cost, uh, will be the same. Uh, the only change is that the benefiting property owners will receive, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars toward, uh, the cost of the project, uh, a cost of seventy-five thousand dollars to the taxpayers. So the next steps, uh, we would expect a motion to approve ordinance twenty-three seventy-one. Uh, if that's approved, uh, we'd move into design tomorrow, uh, get it out to bid, uh, later this fall, anticipate construction in the spring. Uh, once the construction is complete, we'll know the actual costs. Those costs will then get levied on each of the benefiting properties and then they'll have the option to choose either repaying immediately in a lump sum or taking up, uh, the city's financing options and repaying over the course of ten years. So with that, stand for any questions?
Any council questions at this point? Okay.
For Mr. Morgan?
Yes. Question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um. I had asked before about the, um, if it passes, about having those bumps put in the street because that's a residential area over there as well. We have three buses of kids coming through there, going to school, and I fear that with that street being paved, people coming down more into that area because they don't want to hit three ninety-five or, and all of that, will it be any bumps put in there to slow, make sure that traffic goes slow?
Speed bumps aren't included in any of our street standards, so we don't have any speed bumps in the community currently. So, no.
Thank you.
Any other council questions? Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask, uh, the chief or does it have to be?
Yeah, go ahead and ask chief.
Um, chief, for, I know that in the past it has been a concern, some areas in, in that area for policing. Um, if the road is paved, how will that improve your response or the way you're able to police that area?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure paved or unpaved really impacts our response to a call for service in our service area.
As far as, you know, the safety aspect, I guess, uh, being able to get through that unpaid road because once they put the strips in the middle, that will be the only way that people can go in and out basically in a safer way. Um. I guess I just wanted to hear any safety concerns.
Yeah, I, I'm sure there's studies. I can't think of anything off the top of my head, uh, safety-wise specific to driving on gravel versus paved, but I think one would argue that driving on pavement is safer.
Thank you.
Any other council questions? Okay. Um. All right, so we're going to move to proponents. Are there any proponents wishing to speak to this matter? Seeing none. Any neutral parties? Seeing none. Any opponents or remonstrances who wish to speak? Seeing none. Okay, this hearing is now closed. Counsel, other counsel comments? Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you. Um, I just want to clarify and correct me if I'm wrong, um, Mr. Morgan, but the only thing that the city of Hermiston is actually considering is the improvement of this district and those streets. The barriers that are being installed on Elm are not a city decision. We are just responding to ODOT's decision to put those in either way.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay.
Counsel Linton?
I would like to know that anyone from the city requests that ODOT put that barrier on West Elm?
Nah.
No? Okay.
Okay, hang on, I'm. But.
No.
Oh, Counselor Hayward.
I was being polite and waiting. Um, so if we don't pave this, the maintenance for this road will go up. Is that correct?
Yes, significantly, uh, increase the amount of, uh, maintenance we'll have to do to go out there, you know, significantly more traffic going across gravel road will significantly create more, uh, deterioration in the roadway.
So costing the city more money. Thank you.
Ms. Castle?
Thank you. I'd just like to give kudos to the city staff for finding a way to get this done, uh, negotiating with the landowners and, and, um, getting this through. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Any others? Counsel Roberts?
Just briefly, I want to say I appreciate the city staff, um, the work that's gone into this, the, the lack of questions, at least from me, and I, and I assume others tonight, is because, um, we have done a thorough job. I, the timeline you laid out, we've, we've heard a lot of this information. So just for the record, a lack of questions doesn't mean a lack of interest. We've, we've really vetted this over the last several months. So thank you.
Any other council comments?
Mine?
Yes. Counsel.
The timeline in which we have vetted this was apparent up there that Mark gave. The whole rundown from March? To now. So yes, there have been many questions asked about this.
Okay. Uh, gotta give everybody else a chance first. Anybody else? All right, Counsel Linton, you're up again.
I just wanted to say that, um, not too many people walk in the neighborhood over there, so sidewalks, I mean, we put them in or don't put them in, it would save money if we didn't, but I just wanted to uh, say that.
Okay. Any other second bites at the apple? All right. Um, my turn. Thanks for, uh, putting all the work into this. It's, I know it's been a, a long road of, so to speak, and so it's, uh, it's difficult, you know, putting, putting, putting the, the money forward to those folks that, that are going to be financially bound to it is not a difficult, is, is a difficult task to do for us. But at the same time, you know, every, every street that's paid, paved is paid for by the developer or the, uh, property owner. And then that's how the city is set up. So it's, it's difficult, but you know, it's one of the things that we have to do unfortunately, so. I'm sorry? Okay. Okay, this item will be, will only be presented during, uh, ordinance twenty-three seventy-one for final action if the council decides to move forward with the LID. Uh, so I need a motion to either continue this hearing to a specific date and time, table the issue for a specific date and time, terminate the formation of the LID or continue. the issue for a specific date and time, terminate the formation of the LID, or continue to the presentation of ordinance 2371 for possible adoption. Counselor McCarthy?
I move that we continue to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Second.
Okay, and motion by Counselor McCarthy to go with option D, continue the presentation of ordinance 2371 for possible adoption, and seconded by Counselor Meyer. Roll call.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes seven to one with Counselor Linton in opposition. Okay, and now we move on to counsel, to ordinance 2371, creating local improvement district number 323. This item was presented during the public hearing, which is now closed. As no further evidence of public hearing will be received, are there any further questions or comments from the council? Okay, may I request first reading of ordinance be by title, by, read by title only, and calls for a roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Motion passes, however, we have to stop right here, right?
No, at this point, we can, we'll do the reading-
Oh, simple.
-of the, the first reading, however, with the no vote, this won't be able to be completed tonight, and so I will lead the council here, we'll have a motion that we'll need to set after the reading, so.
Okay.
The first reading of ordinance number 2371, an ordinance creating, isn't that picking up?
Yeah.
Lily tells me I need to speak closer. First reading of ordinance number 2371, an ordinance creating local improvement district number 323, describing improvement, setting boundary, providing for payment by benefited properties, securing such payment by lien against the benefited properties, and calling for construction. And now, Mr. Mayor, I would, because of the no vote, so that it's not unanimous to complete this at one meeting, I would suggest the following motion to move us into the second reading, and I would suggest that we have a motion that the first reading of the ordinance number 2371 be adopted, and that ordinance number 2371 be set to September 22nd, 2025 for final reading and adoption.
Mr. Mayor, I would move, as Mr. Tubby stated.
Second.
Okay, been moved by Counselor Roberts and seconded by Counselor Hayward, that we do what he said. Because I can't, I didn't write all that down, and that's-
Move it to the 22nd.
But we're going to move it to, we're going to move the second reading to September 22nd, council meeting. Roll call.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes seven one, with Counselor Linton in opposition. Ordinance 2374, Hermiston Urban Growth Boundary Amendment. Ordinance 2374, Appendix A1, has changed to remove the ordinance placeholder reference and now says 2374. Besides this edit, there are no other changes to supporting documents, no other changes throughout the ordinance 2373, or 2374 and 2375, and there is no new information since the last meeting. Ordinance 2374 and 2375 were presented during the public hearing on August 25th, because the public hearing and comments period closed on August 25th, no other evidence or public testimony will be taken for ordinance number 2374 and 2375. However, council, as part of their deliberations, may ask questions or make comments. City, so, does, are there any council comments, or questions, I should say first, any council questions?
I have to recuse myself.
Okay.
I have Amazon.
All right, so, it wasn't in my script, so, so, so yes, any, any other, any other conflicts of interest?
Sorry, raised my hand too soon.
Okay.
First, I'm going to start off by saying thank you to City Manager Smith, I sent him quite a few questions, and he responded to me and answered all my questions. I had a computer problems, so I did not read your responses, I just got it tonight, and I don't have time to really go through it, but what I'm going to do is just read off the questions that I sent you, and that's all. I asked a question about water dropping two to five feet per year from the wells, because Oregon has a, as a state has a drought, and how is that water going to be replenished? Oregon is experiencing drought, as I was saying, and how will the Columbia River be replenished if that's where all the water is coming from? And transportation assessment, Kettleson and Socius Inc. Incorporated, page 14, will Hermiston take over ownership of Featville Road and Hermiston Hico Road, which are in needed repairs, and who pays for that? And you gave a short answer on that one, so you said that the development would pay for that. Number five was page 20, OR 207 to US 395 needs to be upgraded, who pays for that? 395, two feet road intersection, needs alignments, modifications, and signals, and you said that development will pay for that. And then I asked, what is the city's water usage? And you gave me the answer to that, how much water we use, looks like 1.3 billion? Okay, thank you, Dallas Water. And so, those are my main questions, and just have those on the record, thank you.
Those questions were asked in an email, can those answers be entered via the, as, you don't want, we don't need to read those into the record, do we, or can we, can we put those?
I mean, we can, we can definitely do the ones that she brought up, and we can put them in the minutes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
All right, so you have your answers, and will, those, those answers will be made a part of the record. Any other questions regarding this? Okay, comments, do you have any council comments in regards to ordinance 2374? Counsel Roberts?
Just once again, that this has been thoroughly covered, I feel, by staff, appreciate your work on this, so a lack of question on my part tonight is not anything to be, be said about lack of interest or something, we have been thoroughly briefed on this, and, and it's been gone over very well, so appreciate that.
Counsel Kelso?
I'd like to second what Counsel Robert said about the staff's work on this, they've thoroughly researched this and have presented it in a way that's easier to understand, and I think very straightforward, and I just would like to say that I believe this presents an excellent economic, economic opportunity for our city, for growth and development, and I'm very much in favor of this ordinance, thank you.
Okay. Other council comments? Counsel Brown?
In line kind of with the counselors before me have just said, this is an issue that we've discussed as a city for over a year. We've had an economic opportunities analysis that was done in 2024. We have presentations that we've had since February over this potential addition to the urban growth boundary. We had Mr. Morgan do a presentation at the ship with these very same figures, pictures, these are things that the council has known for a while, the community, it's been shared with the community. It is a complicated and big project, and thus a lot of people have a lot of questions about it, but I do believe it's us on council, it's on us as counselors to be able to, to explain to our constituency, to tell the truth about what's going on, and to do our homework, quite frankly, and the more and more that we do that, the more and more educated the public will be. At the same time, people have very busy lives, they do a lot of different things, and so sometimes it might be the first that they hear when they hear major projects are coming down, but I do appreciate city staff for being very thorough throughout this urban growth boundary proposal, and at this time, it's merely an urban growth boundary proposal. If and when all of these things come to fruition, we will have hearings on those when the time comes, and so I, as Mr. Kelso has said, am in support, and I'm really happy of the economic opportunities that this is going to allow our, our citizens. At the end of the day, I, I think many people worry about the people coming in with jobs that Amazon provides, but with a lot of programs that the BMCC has offered, I hope that our citizens are the ones that take advantage of the jobs that are going to be created here in our area, and so I look forward to promoting the, the job training programs that we have here, because I think it'd be great if our citizens or our constituents are the ones taking advantage of the opportunities that are going to come here, so, thank you.
Counsel McCarthy?
I'm just wondering if city staff wouldn't mind elaborating, because I know we have some, especially with our youth advisory council here, I know Counsel Brown mentioned a presentation at the ship, if we could just clarify what that is for those who aren't familiar.
Ship is the South Hermiston Industrial Park, that's the area where the Amazon and other industrial, large commercial developments taking place in the community.
Thank you.
Either of you two? Okay. Well, this is a, this is a, a big step for us, you know, opening up a, a large urban renewal area, moving our, our urban growth boundary is, is a big step for a city. It, you know, it makes us, it opens our, our area up to more growth, and it is important that we make that, make the accommodations under certain circumstances to create jobs, create working areas, so I'm glad to see that we're moving forward with this so far. City Attorney Tubby will now read the ordinance by title only.
Final reading for adoption of ordinance number 2374, an ordinance amending the city of Hermiston Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan Map, zoning ordinance, and zoning map. Mr. Mayor?
Are there any further council questions or comments for ordinance 2374? Seeing none, can I get a motion that ordinance 2374 be adopted and become effective 30 days after co-adoption of the map amendments by the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to give that to Counsel Kelso, has moving, and Counsel McCarthy, a second. Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. No.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes six one, with Counsel Linton in opposition, and Counselor Hayward is unavailable, yeah.
That.
Him. Okay, ordinance 2375, Counselor, or City Attorney Tubby will now read the ordinance by title only. Sir?
Final reading for adoption of ordinance.
Okay, continue, sir.
Final reading of ordinance number 2375, an ordinance annexing certain real property on Featville Road, describing said real property, withdrawing said real property from special districts, and designating zoning. Mr. Mayor?
Hey, so do we have any further council questions or comments in regards to 2375? Seeing none, can I get a motion that ordinance 2375 be adopted and become effective 30 days after acknowledgement of ordinance 2374, and by the Oregon Land and Conservation and Development Commission?
Come on.
Second.
Okay, been moved by Counsel Meyer, second by Counsel Roberts. Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. No.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes six one with one abstention, and Counselor Linton in opposition. All right, well, that's a big step for us, moving a big area into the city brings a bit more money at some point in time.
Up our tax base.
Yes. All right, Resolution 2394, small cell wireless franchise amendment, City Manager Smith.
Yeah, Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this resolution is simply approval of an amendment to an existing franchise agreement with a telecommunications provider that mainly provides backend service to other cellular phone providers in the community, they've been operating really for about the past two years, they have 18 facilities throughout the community, and so this is simply renewing and extending that franchise for an additional five years. There is one small change to the fees being charged, they're actually being revised down slightly, but other than that, it's simply extending the agreement as written, and we'd recommend approval.
Okay. Do we have any council questions? Seeing none. Any public comment on Resolution 2394? Seeing none. Council comments? Again, seeing none. Can I get a motion to adopt 2394 and lay it on the record?
Motion adopt, second.
You two are just going to need to do this in harmony.
I can.
I was afraid of. I'm going to give that to Counselor Hayward on motion, and second by Counsel McCarthy, because he's closer, got to me sooner. Roll call?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we're now up to other, report on Eotech RV Park location, City Manager Smith?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when the council approved our agreement with Amazon to fund $8 million for an RV park development, we had a little bit of unknown as to exact locations, just because of some concerns of some of our stakeholders that we work with up at Eotech, and so just more as an informational and an update to the council, I wanted to let you know kind of where we're, what direction we're going as we move forward with, with that project, because in, in essence, we will be, we'll be building kind of two separate RV parks rather than one together, like we had originally thought, so I think, wait. What? Okay, all right, so up here, this green box is where, on the Eotech master plan, that's where we've always planned to have what we would call an event RV park, event camping RV park, for people coming to the fair or coming to other events who are, might be camping overnight, that they would be there, and we'd build basically RV hookups and so forth in that area, that's been in the master plan since it was adopted a few years ago, and we had initially planned to just go a little bit south of that with some, with the additional 100 spaces, but so the stakeholders came to us and were a little concerned with taking up some of the space they're using for other things, particularly during the week of fair and rodeo, and they offered to help us kind of find some other, another location that might still work and that we could still do the Amazon project. So after some work and some discussions with a couple of different neighbors- So after some work and some discussions with a couple of different neighbors to the Eotech property, the property in the yellow box was sold to the Farm City Pro Rodeo. They were, they're partnering with us as we kind of work out the final details. They could work, they could move more quickly as far as acquiring the property. So we're now working on plans for the event camping spaces up at, in the green box, that's going to be approximately 85. It's going to be probably a little more than that, but that's the number that we're looking at. And then on this, this is 20 acres. There are lots of good, positive things with this property. First, it comes with water rights, which we've been working to find.
Desperately.
Permanent water rights up there to irrigate. And so this will be one step towards that, which is really a good, good prospect for us. And then the other is it's right there, it can be integrated right in with all of the other operations and activities at, at Eotech. So what our current plans are, the engineers are working to take the front eight, approximately eight acres is what we'll need for the 100 spaces that we've committed to build for Amazon. And, and again, if you remember the agreement, it doesn't necessarily, it means Amazon employees or contractors have first right, but it doesn't mean we can't rent to anybody else, we can rent to other people. And so that front eight acres would be for that RV park. And then the rest of it would be kind of up to, I mean, my thoughts are that we would kind of work with the advisory committee, the users, and kind of figure out what we want to do. It could be good for some field space, some additional parking during large events, different things like that. So I would expect in the future we'll come back to the council with a recommendation of some kind of a modification to the master plan up, up at Eotech. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. If we can go to the other, this is just a quick, this is really early drawing of it. This is flipped on its side. If you were to, the left side is going towards the main portion of the, of Eotech, towards the event center and the main parking lot. And so, you know, the engineers have just shown you could put two full-size soccer fields there in the middle and still have the other potential additional parking, just as kind of placeholders for what could be done with, with that land. We are also working in conjunction with Umatilla County. Counties have some access to funds related to RV parks that cities do not. And so we're, we're trying to work out a partnership where we can kind of utilize those funds as well to help with the operations and, and the long-term use of the, of the park. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council questions? Counselor Roberts?
I think I heard this is just a concept at this point, this slide right here. I see that there was a entrance and exit from the Eotech current road going into Eotech as well as Airport Road. And I didn't know if that was the plan, or is that just kind of conceptually what we're thinking of maybe at this point?
Well, we're required to, there's a required separation between the two exits, and so we really can't get that on Airport Road. And so that's, that's our current idea, is to put it on to the driveway.
Okay.
And it may require, you know, moving the entrance gate back a little bit so that it could be outside of the perimeter.
Got you. That was kind of my thought as well. So, thank you.
Counselor Meyer?
That was kind of my question, but it, it won't disrupt the, the parking in any way, right?
No, it, I mean, it really will enhance the parking. I think the biggest challenge is to figure out how it works kind of operationally, how we get the flow with the rest of the parking.
Thank you.
Counsel Kelso?
I'm thrilled to hear about the, the water rights that come with that piece of property and quantify the, what that is in terms of acre fee.
So it's, it's 20 acres in the Stanfield Irrigation District, so we can transfer that to the adjacent property if we want, or, you know, if we're going to irrigate some of it, we can transfer some of it, only a portion of it, however, however we want to allocate it.
That was my second question. Thank you.
Mr. Hayward?
The question I have is, when we have fair, we have, this is the master plan, how are we going to stop people from going, driving through this area just to avoid trying to get parking, to pay for parking for the fair and stuff? And.
Well, there, there will be lots of fencing and kind of controls as to where people can go, particularly in those large events. I don't anticipate anybody being able to avoid parking, paying for parking.
No, thank you. That's, I was more worried about people who rent those spaces of having people driving through there.
Yeah, no, we, we would be able to control, we're, we're looking, again, we're still kind of early on in operational, but there are systems out there that, that are fully automated, so you can only get in and out with some kind of a key card or something. So we'd be looking at some sort of system like that.
Thank you.
Counsel Linton?
I just wanted to know how close is the RV parking to the, the soccer fields that are out there at this time in lacrosse fields? Is it, how close it?
Yeah, so if, if you, right here where the cursor is, is the entry road. And then right here is all the soccer and develop, the soccer and lacrosse fields that have been constructed.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Baron?
I guess more of a comment because we don't really have very.
Okay, we'll get to comments. This is questions.
And do we have that during, just, it's not something to vote on? Okay.
Just makes it easier, cleaner for me. Any other questions? Public comment? Okay, not public, or council comments?
Thank you. Just a comment that it was one of our, one of, during the Eotech committee meeting, that one of the members brought up, which I thought was actually a pretty good thing, where this is going to be placed, you're probably going to have to do, there's a lot, a tree line that goes all along that road, and anytime that you pull out, leaving Eotech, you almost have to kind of inch a little further, that way you can kind of be able to see and clear traffic. So I think that's going to make it also a lot safer to be able to pull out of that road when people are leaving Eotech and not have to pull out so much. But that was just a little anecdotal thing. I was going to bring more of that stuff up during committee reports, but I wouldn't have had a picture to point to, so that's why I wanted to say no.
Perfect. Other council comments? This is, okay, so it's my turn. So yeah, this is, this is a fantastic opportunity, and I'm glad we're, we're able to move forward with this from the looks of things. But in regards to that, you did, you said that, that the Farm City Pro Rodeo is actually the one that's buying it?
They, they, because they could move more quickly than we do as government, they, they have purchased it right now, but will be, there will be at some point, we will reimburse them for, for their investment in some, some way.
Well, since there is no, no action being requested, all I can say is, you know, Luke said this is, this has, this has a lot of, a lot of potential, and it's, you know, the nice, the nice thing is, is we're, we're able to build, build all this, and it's not going to take anything out of, out of the city coffers, which is even better. And yet, when it's all done and said, it will actually be a, an income, you know, a free income stream for us as opposed to, you know, a, being a burden, it's going to beyond pay for itself because the minute the first tenant walks in or hooks up with, it's starting to pay for itself.
And it has water.
It's income. So yeah, this is, this is fantastic work, and, and I appreciate your efforts in getting this accomplished. All right, committee reports, we are at that time. Do we have any committee reports? I knew you were going to do that.
Of course. I have an Eotech committee update. It was quite a bit of an update. So there's a couple of different things. We talked about heroes. As you might remember, the heroes under the leadership of Mr. Luke Swanson applied for a Parks and Rec grant from the state. Unfortunately, we did not get it. We did have them go down, even down to Salem, along with our Parks Director, Mr. Brandon Arts, to testify in favor. And unfortunately, there was just so many applications, and I believe Eastern Oregon only got two out of, I don't know how many application, or how many grant awards went out. So we did not get it. We're looking to make another application in the future. I did also mention that if, if there was anything like council could do, or any local elected officials could do to maybe move the needle, we did, I did offer that on our behalf, to see if, if we could write a letter, do something like that, to see if we can move the needle the next time around. The donor wall is going to go up soon, and so that's the update on heroes. As far as operations update, one of the great things to hear, especially from representatives from the Farm City Pro Rodeo, is how attractive and how, how great the grounds are at the, at the rodeo grounds, that many people come to our rodeo arena because of how great the, the grounds are. And I can't tell you the specifics of soil to dirt ratio, they got something going on up there where a lot of people do want to come over, and so that was really great to hear. As far as the financials, when we start talking about it, the numbers are a bit skewed right now just because we're going to be building the RV parks and it's going to be reimbursed. And so right now, on the Eotech side of things, it might look a little skewed, but those are essentially us making the investment on the front end to be able to build it with Amazon reimbursing us on the back end. Another thing, another good news about water rights is the 140 acres that we got from that grant for, to extend the airport also has water rights. And so those 140 acres, we'll probably be able to use, I don't know, quantifying, I think that's a really great question that Mr. Kelso asked earlier, but with that amount of acreage, we will have a little bit more water rights that we can transfer over to Eotech. From what I understand, it's still Stanfield Irrigation District, and so that's where we're going to see if we can transfer a little bit more water rights over to the Eotech. And as far as the RV parks, City Manager Smith just talked about it, but one thing that we do have is a timeline that the event parking or the RV park that's made for the events will be, we're trying to shoot for that to be done by next rodeo. So by summer of 2026, by then, hopefully we're done. We'll see if we're still kind of working on it by then, but it is a timeline for one year to be able to finish one of them. The other one will still kind of come. And so as the council knows, but more for the public record, Amazon will be the one, again, reimbursing and making the investments on that. Any extensions, any water extensions or anything like that will be fronted on, or will be paid for us, will be paid by the city to be able to construct it, but reimbursed by Amazon. And so a little bit lengthy, but that's what I have, an update from Eotech.
Okay. Great information. Thank you, sir. That was very detailed and easy to understand. Any other council committee reports? Counsel Roberts?
Last week, I attended the Airport Advisory Committee meeting. We did not have a quorum, but we did get updates from Mr. Anderson. That 140 acres, the previous owners have opted not to lease it back, so that land is up for lease right now. It is the land and the irrigation equipment. I, I know that, you know, farm-ready land is, shouldn't be a problem to get that leased out. Obviously, everybody's finishing up their farming operations, so don't have a timeline on that, but it is up for lease if anybody knows anybody interested in, in farm-ready land. Last month, the airport sold about 4,000 gallons of fuel to their normal, everyday customers, and then a little bit more beyond that to Lifelight, so the fuel sales were looking good up there. There was a little bit of a delay on the hangar project because they got the wrong-sized fascia board sent to them, and they have the right stuff now, so should be getting that completed. The first one, I think, is already got a customer leased out, and they've got quite a number of people interested in the rest of them. So Mr. Anderson says filling those shouldn't be a problem, so that's really good. There is something I wanted to make sure and mention, because it's not the first time it's come up, but Mr. Anderson told us that about two to four times a year, they get people showing up at the airport because they've been in contact with somebody who they sent money to and said that they were going to meet them there, and of course, it's a no-show, it's a complete scam. I think one of them, I don't remember, Mr. Morgan, who, it was some famous person, do you remember?
They were going to meet Miley Cyrus.
They were going to meet Miley Cyrus at the Hermiston Airport, and this person showed up.
Yeah.
And so it, it apparently is, is quite common throughout the area, but I thought maybe potentially in one of the chief's posts for scam warnings, if maybe you might reach out to Mr. Anderson and could just put that out there, that if somebody says they're going to fly in, into the Hermiston Airport to meet you, if you pay for their ticket with, you know, cards from 7-Eleven or something, that, that is a scam, just right on the. The security cameras have been all set up, they're working up there, which is very good. And so, yeah, just a lot of good stuff going on at the airport, nice update. I just, we just need to get more people on the committee. We have, I think, three vacancies still on the Airport Advisory Committee. They've been longstanding vacancies, so I'm going to renew my call to, hey, if, if you can meet at 4 o'clock on a Wednesday afternoon once a month, we need people to, to fill those committee spots, so.
Maybe reach out to the folks at our renting hangars. Give them a, give them a holler, and there you go, rattle their chain. Okay, any other city committees or liaisons? Counsel Baron?
The Hispanic Advisory Committee has not met yet. We will meet next week, but I believe that at a different meeting, I had said that the Hispanic Heritage Celebration was going to take place on October 5th. It is not. It's going to be on October 4th, Saturday from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., and it's going to be at the Hermiston Community Center. So be there or be square, which we will not be there because we are going to be in Portland.
Portland.
But those that are able to attend should, should go for a great event.
Excellent, that's exciting. Okay, any other? Last chance. Okay, my turn again. First off, I want to extend my appreciation to Counselor McCarthy, Council President McCarthy, for stepping forward and taking over last meeting at the last minute. I believe that I survived a near-death experience because I had a cold.
Man cold?
Yeah, yeah. But luckily, luckily I had a, a very well taken care of by my in-house nursing staff of cats, dogs, and my loving wife. So it was, I survived. So please, hold your applause. But yeah, I, I do appreciate Counselor McCarthy stepping forward and, and taking care of things. It was very much appreciated. I didn't get a chance to talk about fair, you know, we had a great fair, so everything was, looked well. The parade seemed to be okay. One thing, you know, my biggest concern on it is, is that, you know, as, as a parade goes on, goes on further, you know, people are encroaching in on the, on the fair pathway and making it more dangerous. So I think we need to have a conversation with folks in regards to the, from the, from the actual parade folks to maybe start looking at them providing some, some means of keeping people back, because our, our law enforcement is, is busy with keeping people on the corners and, and maintaining order. So, but we, you know, it's either that or we're going to have to make sure that certain items are not passed from the road, from the parade to the, to the, to the crowd. So otherwise, I mean, that's, that's our only two options. I see Lifelight is, is going great guns over there by the hospital, it's, appears to be almost done. Library. All right, is that? All right, is that something you were gonna talk about? All right, then I'll leave, I'll leave the library to you, sir. All the stuff that's coming forward. I know that Counsel McCarthy is just chomping at the bit to tell about what's going on in the city because he usually does. So I will let him continue on when it gets to that point. But I'm gonna have an email coming out to, to everybody in regards to some stuff that's, that we need to address. So I would advise all of you at this point in time to please take a moment to read the council rules and know them backwards, forwards, upside down because we need to make sure that we're all going by those rules. Counsel President, report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things going on and fill me in if I'm missing anything. But immediately I just want to talk about this week. Of course, there, the roundup is happening. So if you're heading through Pendleton, maybe not. Just to make sure you're keeping in mind the traffic and if you're going out there, I hope you have fun and are safe. You also got an email earlier from Lily detailing that the 11th, so later this week, will be the first day you can file Declaration of Candidacy for the Ward Council Elections. Form SEL 101, free to do. You just have to live in a section of Hermiston. You can find out where your ward is by calling the city or there is a ward map also online. On the 20th, there are a couple of things going on here. In Hermiston, they, the Hermiston High School Performing Arts Fundraiser and Auction is on Saturday, the 20th. Doors open at 5:00. It's a $50 ticket with, with a brisket dinner and a cash bar and some silent auction materials to raise funds for band. I believe there'll be a performance by the Majesty Choir and also Hermiston High School Improv. And then also, counsel, you would have received in the memo from Byron last week. I don't know if you're planning on talking about this more, Mr. Smith, is the Farm to Square event happening in, in Portland, which sort of a revival, but kind of a reimagining is probably more accurate of the watermelon event that we used to do in Portland. We're all invited to that. If you're interested in attending, we need to let Lily know. And that's all I've got for right now.
All right. Thank you, sir. Looking forward to that event myself, to the, for the most part. A lot of stuff coming up for us, yes. So thank you, sir. Council reports? Yes, sir?
I just gotta say, the new logo we did for the city that the city drew, they have shirts for that here at the city hall to let the public know.
Counsel Kelso?
I'd just like to mention that the Stepping Stones Alliance's annual gala and fundraiser is coming up on Saturday, October 11th from 6:00 to 10:00 at Eotech. Tickets are on sale now and they're $50 apiece. So if you're interested in going, please purchase one or 10 tickets. That would be great. Thank you.
I can't purchase two. It's either one or 10.
Probably more like 25 for you, Counsel.
Killing me.
That's what happens when you leave.
Any other council comments?
Do it again.
Counsel Dran?
One of the things that was emailed to us was regarding need for volunteers for council representation at the game, high school versus Chihuahua on the, the 19th. Counsel Baron is supposed to be there. If there are no other takers, I can be there from 6:00 to 7:00. I also want to give kudos to, to the city for implementing the Ask Hermiston. I think it's important for us to be able to hear for, from our constituents and for people to be able to ask any questions then and have them answered. I believe that, you know, we're all looking to improve in communication and also transparency. So thank you for coming up with that idea. And I hope that there's many out there that will be able to submit their questions and be able to see that, you know, the city will be responding to those questions and my, so thank you for that.
Yes, that is, I wanted to say something about that and I didn't write it down. So nice job. Thank you. Yes. Good, good stuff there. That is, that is a good way for us to hear from some of the folks. Other council reports? Seeing none. Youth advisors, did they take off on us?
They did.
They did. First chance to talk and they bail on us. What the heck?
And after the speech we gave them?
Yeah, no kidding. None.
They didn't realize that they have to stick around.
Oh, actually, we, we did tell them that. We did, we did, yeah, we did, we did tell them that they'd have a chance to speak, but I think they figured that it was this time here. So that's, was fine. Okay, City Manager, report.
All right, so I'm gonna try to hit these chronologically, but if I miss, get them out of order. So on the 19th, we mentioned the city chat. Lily just said that we already have three without Counsel Dran. So if, but with her, that would be four and that would be our, kind of what we want to shoot for. So if there's anybody else interested, let us know. The 20th, the Umatilla County effort, we just want to make sure that, that we can let them know who's going. So if you're planning to go down. And it really is kind of a reimagining. It's the county's version of, of that Portland watermelon giveaway. So.
Will they be holding that in Hermiston at all?
Not that I know of.
Is it a one-time thing?
It's just, well, I don't know if they're gonna keep it going. We're, we're letting them take the lead and we're following their lead. Then the 27th right now is a tentative grand opening at the library. We're still wanting to make sure we have all the.
September?
September 27th. We just wanted to make sure we've got all the finished work done, that we're, you know, things like the elevator working and being inspected and things like that. So, but we're still on track right now. So if it changes, I'll let you know. Then it's already been mentioned, the LOC meeting in Portland in the beginning of October. And so that is all that I have.
All right. Well, anybody else have anything for the good order? We are adjourned.